Parking lot there. It's kind of hilly in that area, so the goal is to have any maintenance vehicles which are very seldom, you know, seldomly utilized at the sites to park at the end of the parking lot there and then have a walk around to the, around the outside to go back to the, the site to help service the equipment as needed. And then this just shows the standards that we're going to replace. We're going to maintain the lights that are currently out there right now. We're just going to essentially just attach them to this new pole to maintain the, the lighting because, you know, I'm talking to the church that pole services both of those fields there. So we don't want to interrupt, like I said, any of their operations that they've already been realizing at the, at the site. These are aerials. I'm not, I'll go through them quickly because I know we showed them earlier, but this just kind of highlights the pole that's proposed to be replaced in the middle of the property. This is looking west at the site. And then this is back in the outfield looking towards the east and just highlighting again the proposed pole that we're looking at replacing. And then this is the grassy area where the proposed equipment would be located with the fence. Again, we know, looking in the code, we're proposing a six foot tall fence so that we can maintain the area that we are proposing over here against this existing vegetation. So just wanted to give you a closer look at what we're actually proposing here. I think that wraps that up.
Okay, thank you. Question? Is anyone?
Oh, question. What's your client's objections to landscaping? Is it cost, availability?
Normally, it's, there's really, it comes down to whenever we have to landscape, we have to shrink the compound space because we can't go, you know, otherwise we have to go back and obtain more land from the landowners. So it's really, if we can, the goal is, we understand why landscaping is proposed. It's to hide, you know, the equipment from view shed on the ground. So we try to come up with an alternative that, that realizes the same effect of landscaping without having to maintain the vegetation that's there because somebody's got to go out and, you know, regularly spray and make sure that, you know, one of those trees dies, that it doesn't look bad. And so our, our goal is not necessarily, we're not, we're not opposed to it. It's, we try to see if we can propose an alternative method that's a little bit more maintenance free, has the same visual aesthetic to protect the view shed inside of the compound. You know, because traditionally, you know, you put up a chain link fence and then you landscape around the chain link fence. And so we're trying to put up a nicer material, more expensive material and try to make that nice look all the way around the, the outside of the secure leased area. So it's not that we're not opposed to it. It's just we, we try to first see if we can all propose an alternative.
Do you have any samples?
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna give you guys a brochure that you guys can take a look at. This is the Semtech line. It kind of goes through the highlight panel side of it. And then it shows you the, it comes, like I said, it comes with a stone-like material or a wooden material. And there's different color swatches that we try to match, you know, existing buildings and things like that. So.
Would that be similar to sound walls, like going down two steps?
Uh, they're not, they're not, it's a different look. It's the same kind of a look. It's a different material. Yeah, yeah. This is a composite material. You know, it's very strong. I mean, they, you go on their website and they've got promo videos of people trying to hit a golf ball through it and it doesn't, you know, it just bounces off of it. So we try to do that without making it as big and heavy as those big sound barriers down, down the highways.
Anyone else question? Seeing none, we, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
At this one time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal. So at this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, you can vote. Let the record show two, three, make it three. Opposed or with concerns? Let the record show three. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you all for coming. And with that, we'll go to the next item, which is PC 23 dash 23 All Rig USA.
Good evening. PC 23 dash 23 All Rig USA is a request for an amended C8 on a 2.59 acre tract located on the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road at Town South Road northwest of Old Tesson Road. This site is in South County and you can see it outlined in the aerial.
Parking lot there. It's kind of hilly in that area, so the goal is to have any maintenance vehicles, which are very seldom, you know, seldomly utilized at the sites, to park at the end of the parking lot there and then have a walk around to the, around the outside to go back to the site to help service the equipment as needed. And then this just shows the standards that we're going to replace. We're going to maintain the lights that are currently out there right now. We're just going to essentially just attach them to this new pole to maintain the lighting, because, you know, I'm talking to the church, that pole services both of those fields there, so we don't want to interrupt, like I said, any of their operations that they've already been realizing at the, at the site. These are aerials, I'm not, I'll go through them quickly, because I know we showed them earlier, but this just kind of highlights the pole that's proposed to be replaced in the middle of the property. This is looking west at the site, and then this is back in the outfield, looking towards the east, and just highlighting again the proposed pole that we're looking at replacing. And then this is the grassy area where the proposed equipment would be located with the fence. Again, we know, looking in the code, we're proposing a six-foot-tall fence so that we can maintain the area that we are proposing over here against this existing vegetation. So just wanted to give you a closer look at what we're actually proposing here. I think that wraps that up.
Okay, thank you. Question? Is anyone?
Oh, question. What's your client's objections to landscaping? Is it cost, availability?
Normally, it's, there's really, it comes down to whenever we have to landscape, we have to shrink the compound space, because we can't go, you know, otherwise we have to go back and obtain more land from the landowners. So it's really, if we can, the goal is, we understand why landscaping is proposed. It's to hide, you know, the equipment from view shed on the ground. So we try to come up with an alternative that, that realizes the same effect of landscaping without having to maintain the vegetation that's there, because somebody's got to go out and, you know, regularly spray and make sure that, you know, one of those trees dies, that it doesn't look bad. And so our, our goal is not necessarily, we're not, we're not opposed to it, it's, we try to see if we can propose an alternative method that's a little bit more maintenance-free, has the same visual aesthetic to protect the view shed inside of the compound, you know, because traditionally, you know, you put up a chain link fence, and then you landscape around the chain link fence. And so we're trying to put up a nicer material, more expensive material, and try to make that nice look all the way around the, the outside of the secure leased area. So it's not that we're not opposed to it, it's just we, we try to first see if we can all propose an alternative.
Do you have any samples?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna give you guys a brochure that you guys can take a look at. This is the Semtech line, kind of goes through the highlight panel side of the, and then it shows you the, like I said, it comes in a stone-like material or wooden material, and there's different color swatches that we try to match, you know, existing buildings and things like that, so.
Would that be similar to sound walls, like going down two steps?
They're not, they're not, it's a different, it's the same kind of a look, it's a different material. Yeah, yeah, this is a composite material. You know, it's very strong, I mean, they, you go on their website, and they've got promo videos of people trying to hit a golf ball through it, and it doesn't, you know, it just bounces off of it. So we try to do that without making it as big and heavy as those big sound barriers down, down the highways.
Anyone else question? Seeing none, we, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
At this one time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, we do not need rebuttal. So at this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. Those in favor, you can vote. Let the record show two, three, make it three. Opposed or with concerns? Let the record show three, and that concludes this hearing. Thank you all for coming. And with that, we'll go to the next item, which is PC 23-23 All Rig USA.
Good evening. PC 23-23 All Rig USA is a request for an amended C8 on a 2.59 acre tract located on the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road at Town South Road northwest of Old Tesson Road. This site is in South County, and you can see it outlined in the aerial. From the land use map, you can see that this site is Catty Corner from the Mercy Hospital South site, and the east side of Tesson Ferry Road is developed with a variety of commercial, retail, office, and medical office uses, and single-family homes are to the east and west of Tesson Ferry Road accessed via Town South Drive. And you can see some of this commercial and residential development from this aerial. This is looking east into the site. Tesson Ferry Road is at my back. This is looking east into the site again. Looking north across Town South Road. Looking west across Tesson Ferry Road. Looking northwest at the intersection of Tesson Ferry and Town South at the Mercy Hospital site. Looking south down Tesson Ferry. Looking north across Town South. This is looking east toward Old Tesson Road. Looking south in the middle of the site. Looking south again. This is looking west. This is looking south at the adjacent property. And now we'll hear from the petitioner.
You'll want to point the thing at that computer over there.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Joe Vavreena with HR Green, Civil Engineer in the Project. With me tonight, I'm also joined with Dan Shane, who's our traffic consultant, also with HR Green, and then also Jordan Chapman with All Rig USA, who's the property owner. Tonight, we are here to present our project at 5240 Town South Road, which is a request for an amendment to the C8 planned commercial district to allow for the redevelopment of this property. Currently, the property consists of a vacant bank with drive-through facility and parking, parking lot. Our proposal is to raise the building and parking lot, as well as, it's hard to see in this image, but as well as close the full access that's on Schusler, and as part of the proposal, we'll be asking for a new access, full access onto Old Tesson Ferry Road, in addition to the existing current access point that's there. The proposal before you is for two quick-service restaurants. The one to the north is a proposed Chick-fil-A, and the one to the south is a proposed Chipotle. Both facilities will have a drive-through facility. The Chick-fil-A on the north will have a dual-lane drive-through, which is one of their newer initiatives that they have been incorporating to a lot of their later developments over the last 18 months. Really, the, it was born out of COVID, and it was really, the purpose is to expedite and make the, the traffic move through more efficiently through the drive-through lane. The genesis behind this was really, as I mentioned before, to react to the influx of customers that, that they saw through COVID. And it's hard to see on here, but up at the north corner there, there's a, there'll be a freestanding canopy, which were the order points are. That's where we'll have four to six team members that'll take orders, and then up by the pickup window, there'll be, there's another canopy that's located that will also have team members that will hand out orders, again, in an effort to speed up the rate of service. The outside lane really is, as Chick-fil-A has coined it, is a flex lane, really is for the operator's flexibility to use it how they see fit. It can be used for meal fulfillment, it could be used as a bypass lane, or it could also be used for mobile order, depending on what best serves their business. The, when I get to the elevations, I can touch on this a little bit more, but when you get to the pickup window, we've all been to a quick-service restaurant that has